Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for May 22nd, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed? Would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you very much.
We are very happy this evening that once again we have two students joining us to lead us in the pledge. For those of you who aren't sure where the flag is tonight, it's on the other side of the divider. If you can roughly point yourself in that direction, that would be great. We have Ellie Aller and her twin brother Evan Aller to lead us in the pledge. Okay, we will move on to Board and Administrative Reports. Board President Report. A highlight of my week was accompanying Dr. Cartwright and the principals from Jefferson Elementary Rhonda Buchanan and Webster Stanley Elementary School Beth Goliazi to the state Capitol where we were present for them to receive recognition from the Department of Public Instruction for the success of their students. We have a number of schools in the district who have and continue to receive special awards under the title of Schools of Recognition. And it was so great to be in the presence of greatness in our state Capitol recognizing the great things that go on in not only those two schools but in each of our schools every day and in the schools across the state. Once again, this is a great time of year. If you see the signage outside many of our schools inviting people to join them for parent night and special evenings to recognize the success of our students and our staff members at this time of year. There's a high school orchestra concert tomorrow night, there are high school choir concerts next week, and of course graduation coming up the first Monday in, I'm sorry, the first Sunday in June. And those of you who enjoy parades, you'll have a great opportunity on Monday to see all five of our middle schools and our two high schools participating in the annual Memorial Day Parade starting near the corner of Jackson and Algoma and proceeding inside Cemetery. So lots of positive things to celebrate in our district once again. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Cartwright.
So much, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Dr. Herzog, so there are a lot of wonderful things that are occurring right now within the school district. We're going to go ahead and get started right away with South Park Middle School. Eighth graders at South Park Middle School recently heard from the current record holder for the fastest known time to complete the Wisconsin Ice Age Trail. The importance of goal-setting and persevering through difficulties was the focus of the visit. Additionally, South Park's teen work students recently took part in cake decorating contests. The activity demonstrated the importance of positive work behaviors and qualities needed to be employable. Over at Oshkosh North High School, community two students invited parents, teachers, administrators, and guests to learn about current applications that are available to use with smartphones and tablets. The students researched 26 applications and shared their learning with those in attendance. I can attest personally, since I attended this event, it was very interesting and the knowledge that the students took away and were able to share with community members about those applications were very important. Oshkosh North recently had two students featured in Teen Inc. magazine. Congratulations to Logan Mitchell Samuel and Gabrielle Lattary. Congratulations also to Madeline Lebrun and Kayden Bessler for being selected for UW-Oshkosh High School Art Day. Madeline's figure sculpture was selected for the Art Education Award and Kayden's projected portrait was selected for Best of Show. Last but not least, congratulations to Oshkosh North sophomore Anna Berger who was recently, who recently received second place in the Library of Congress's Letters About Literature Writing Competition. So congratulations to all of these students. Schools throughout the district recently hosted Bike to School Day events to promote biking to school. Sponsored by Safe Routes to School, the activities were a great way to get students active and thinking about bike safety. We are so appreciative to all of our riders who remember to follow the rules of the highway as well as wearing those helmets. Washington Elementary School Council students recently delivered May Day baskets to the Washington community. And third graders recently collaborated on a unique technology project. Students spent time researching an animal of their choice to learn about its habitat and why they live where they do. When all the research, writing and construction was done, students used the school's green screen to film videos of themselves, shrunk down, and given a virtual tour of their habitat. Carl Trager Elementary recently hosted Ken Lindquist for a songwriting music residency. Ken worked with kindergarteners through fifth graders on song compositions and the writing of the new Carl Trager school song. The students absolutely loved the experience and were extremely proud of their personal song creations. Shapiro STEM Academy held their final author celebration for the school year. Students were encouraged to dress up for the grand gala with a spotlight on Shapiro student authors. Merrill Middle School recently welcomed the entire Oshkosh community to attend its community and family night. Merrill families and community members had the opportunity to explore showkeys of student work, including the Genius Hour projects of eighth grade science students. Attendees enjoyed a free hot dog and chip dinner while meeting with school staff and learning more about the school community at large. Franklin Elementary School recently enjoyed a visit from Frankie Moscato, a local singer who uses her own personal experiences of being bullied to teach others about kindness. Frankie is known for her Be Kind message. She taught the students three rules. One, be kind to kids who need it most. Two, be kind to parents and teachers. And three, be an upstander. Schools throughout the district recently celebrated National School Library Month. Our media specialists created special events and competitions to spread the word that everyone is welcome in our libraries. This year's theme was Everyone Belongs at Your School Library. Two of our elementary schools were recently recognized for success in educating students. Jefferson Elementary and Webster Stanley Elementary Schools received the 2019 Wisconsin Title I School of Recognition Award. In fact, they received the award in what is considered to be one of the most difficult categories called beating the odds. The award recognizes the efforts of students, their families, teachers, school administrators, and school staff members to break the link between poverty and low academic achievement. Students from Oshkosh North High School and Merrill Middle School received numerous awards during the 2019 Skills USA State Conference. Listed on the screen are each student's accomplishments. Many will be headed to the Skills USA National Conference in June. Congratulations to every one of these students and best of luck. We are continuing to spotlight a few of our teachers and sharing their reflections on why they teach. The individuals on the screen remind us of how caring our teachers are each and every day and in every interaction that they have with staff and with students and community at large. We are so grateful for these individuals and for all of our teachers. As superintendent, I continue to remain committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout the Oshkosh community. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time over the last two weeks. At this point in time, I will turn this back over to Dr. Herzog. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. It's always such a pleasure to read about and hear about the successes of our students. They just, and staff, they just seem to be endless. That's great. Next, we move on to District Administrator Supplemental Reports. I haven't seen any notes on that.
We do not have any today.
Okay. We did have a listening session before our first board meeting on May 8th for this month, and usually there's a report, an update on that, so Dr. Gunlock is going to share that this evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There were three individuals who came and spoke at listening session. The first individual spoke about our substitute policies and wanted to know if there were some ways we could review them, maybe change the policies, do something to increase the number of substitute teachers in our schools because there's an obvious sub shortage. The second individual was from the ESTRA group and had spoken to us before about busing for students and talked about how we can get some data out there in terms of which students are eligible for that type of busing. The third person talked about the school breakfast program participation and shared some information with us. Talked about the fact that the school breakfast report card has Wisconsin as dead last in the United States in terms of school breakfast participation. So there was a robust discussion about how we could maybe make a dent in that and change that for the better. So those were the three individuals. It was a very full listening session. All three got a lengthy chance to express their issues, so.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gunlock. You're welcome. I believe there are one or two committee reports from the board's standing committees. We'll start with Mrs. Olmsted.
Tuesday, just last Tuesday, yesterday, we had a meeting, the Policy and Governance Meeting, Matt. We had nothing for public forum, and then the items that we went through was, the first one was Policy 5722, which the school-sponsored publications productions. This policy was brought back to the committee for further review of the recommended options from the April meeting. The committee chose options from the templates and the draft. The policy will return to individuals to return before the board approval. If changes are made to the draft, then those changes will return to the committee for further review of the June 10th policy and governance meeting. If no changes are made to it, then the policy will move forward to board approval on our June 26th board meeting. Then we went through school-sponsored publications productions. It's the Administrative Guideline for 5722, and no changes were made to the guideline. And then we went through Administrative Guideline 3410, Administration Compensation. We added a statement to this, to the Administrative Guideline. The statement was added to this guideline to address extending the use of vacation through the month of July. Right now, we have it at June, and it doesn't give enough time for teachers and staff to take those days, so we extended it through July. And this change will align with the guidelines, we're changing it policy. And then we went through and we discussed adding our, we went through, we didn't go through any of our current committees, but we wanted, we started discussing the new possibility of the Legislative Committee and the new policy to accompany that. Barb had gotten hold of and sent us all the focus, and you guys all got that, and there was like five or six different policies in there from different school boards. We want to read through those. We're going to come back together in June. We did change the times, so we do need to discuss that, Bob, with you too, and have that one kind of write a draft on that policy and who wants to be part of it. So we're just in the beginning of that. And Vicki, we're going to give her like the guideline to how we want that. So if you guys want to give your input on that, I know Jim and Allison, that was kind of some of your stuff, so let us know and go through that. And then the future meeting is June 10th, Monday, first day of summer at 8:00 a.m. So if you guys want to go. And that's it?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Olmsted. I believe Mr. Evans also has a report.
Yes, I do. I'm going to give a report on the Administrator Compensation Committee. First item that we talked about is what Kelly just got done talking about, so I won't go into that, but it's the, giving, well, I guess I will a little bit. Thirty additional days for them to use vacation time in July. The second thing we talked about was market analysis for the CPI. Typically, human resources with the assistance of the Business Department would conduct the salary range, study every other year, and on the off years elevate the range by the CPI. Graphs were shared showing Oshkosh is one of the lowest spending out of 424 districts in the state for administrative costs per pupil. It was noted that the comparison shared was just salaries, no benefits. There was discussion and several questions rose, including the following. How do we go about moving so many categories from the bottom up? How far do we want to move each year? What is the ultimate goal? How fast of a movement can the budget tolerate? Do we want to look at longevity to keep people here? Can we change the 15-year benchmark and what should the benefit be? How do we hire candidates and be fair to long-term employees? We came up with an action plan. We're going to reestablish an updated range based on recent data, check with other districts to see what they are currently doing to manage and maintain where administrative compensation is going and what they are doing with longevity, find out how many people are in the various categories, graph where district administrators are located within the range, period. And then the last thing was payment of professional dues currently. There is a 515 dues allocation made, which has not been changed for several years, and a lot of the professional dues is right at that level, so that doesn't allow for any subscriptions to trade magazines or anything else. We decided to raise that to 1,000 and move it over to the individual budgets of the building, and that's going to be coming to policy and governance. Our next meeting is June 6th at 7:30 a.m. Meet you by a half hour.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there any, are there any other board committee reports tonight? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. I don't believe anyone signed up for non-agenda-related, so we will move on to the agenda-related public forum. I just need to read these guidelines so that we all know what the expectations are this evening. You will be called to the table based on the order in which you signed up at the door, and once you're called, we ask that you state your name and address and the topic you wish to cover. If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of people, please indicate the group that you represent. Please understand that in accordance with parliamentary procedure, this is not, this is your opportunity to testify before the board. It is not a question-and-answer session, nor is it an opportunity to engage in debate with the board. Staff are available to meet with you after you speak, should you have any questions, and board members are always happy to meet with you after the meeting, should you wish to discuss your issues of concern with any of them. We are asking that you limit your comments to three minutes, given the large number of people who have signed up for this evening. And I would remind you that, trying to combine two sheets here, I would remind you that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160, who will direct you to the appropriate administrator. If there is a group present who will be expressing the same points of view tonight, we ask the representative present the information on behalf of the group and that the individual state who they are representing. Also, if you are not present with the group and a point has already been made, it is requested that you highlight your point quickly to allow all speakers an opportunity to present within a reasonable period of time. So with that, we will move on to the list. The first name on the list is Kyra Paulson. Kyra Paulson, I'm not sure what the correct name is. May have a seat at the microphone. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Please state your name and address.
Ms. Kyra Paulson, I live on 113 Prospect Avenue.
Thank you very much. What would you like to share with the board tonight?
About the Smith situation.
Okay.
And this is like something I wrote.
Excuse me, we know this is an emotional time, and speaking before a microphone in any circumstance can be daunting. And so take your time, let's just stay within the three minutes, okay? Thank you.
In the past, I went to Smith. When I first went to Smith, I was behind because I was at a private school and wasn't really ready for that kind of math or anything, but the teachers there helped me through it. The staff there is sweet and are like a big family, and I know what you're thinking. It's a lot of money to, for repairs, and money doesn't grow on trees. My mom says it every two seconds. But if we all pitch in a little, we could at least do something or try to save the school. And you can even just spread the word, because if you spread the word, maybe other people could help. And if you just spread the word, you could be an activist, like I've been taught at my school in sixth grade at South Park. You can be an activist. So are you going to be an activist today?
Thank you very much for coming. Next is Mark Roloff.
Dr. Herzog, members of the school board, thank you. I was told in show business you're never supposed to follow Kids Act, so you did a wonderful job. Congratulations. I'm not here on behalf of the city council. I'm the city manager for the city of Oshkosh. My business address is 215 Church Avenue. Although I'm not here at the direction or authority of the council, as a chief executive for the city of Oshkosh, I feel it's necessary for me to speak up on an issue that's very important to our community. We've had some wonderful collaborations with the school district over the years, and one of our initiatives has been to align our strategic plans so that we're working off the same script, and I think the work we've done has been fantastic. One of the things that the city brings to the table is the issue of economic development, and schools are a vital part of economic development. But the efficiency and effectiveness of the city is also important, and that's also in our strategic plan. As we've aligned our strategic plans, the importance of the schools to the entire community is absolutely necessary. And the situation you have at Smith, I don't envy any of you. You're going to have to make a very tough decision. But in terms of the school districts and its over $100 million in deferred maintenance is something that you simply can't overlook. And while I've been to Smith Elementary, I was invited there very early on, I believe Ms. Brown was with principal back then, and you have a wonderfully engaged parents group. And I've seen that in many of the schools that I've visited throughout the district. The school is not defined by the building. The building is merely one tool, like so many other tools that we have at our disposal. But with $100 million in deferred maintenance, to invest that much money in Smith and not necessarily have all the problems resolved, one of the things I've learned is when you start opening up a building, it gets worse and it gets more costly. You don't even know at this point how much more you might encounter. And for that reason, I think it's necessary for the school district to take a look at closing Smith, including those students and their wonderful families and their culture with our other schools. I think our children are very resilient. We teach that to them and they learn that. And we need to address our facilities in a very systematic way, and getting to that $100 million, this is just adding to that $100 million, and I think, again, I don't envy you, but I think it's necessary for you to do the right thing to close that facility and move on with addressing the many other school facility issues that you have. And I see my time is coming to an end, so I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Roloff. Next will be Tricia Castle, followed by Wayne Youngworth.
I am Tricia Castle, the Chair of Oshkosh for Education. My address is 945 Anchorage Court. Tonight, I am here speaking on behalf of the 22 community members that make up Oshkosh for Education. It is never easy to have to make a decision like the one you are faced with tonight. Closing a school is no half-hearted task. However, based on all of the information that the district has provided to the community about Smith Elementary, including the facilities report in 2017 that looks at all of our district buildings, the Oshkosh for Education Commission fully supports the district's recommendation to close Smith Elementary and move students to Jefferson Elementary. O4E's ongoing role is to monitor the progress of the strategic plan, and facilities has remained a priority in the plan for several years. O4E is looking at this as a decision in support of the strategic plan, a plan that the entire community was asked to participate in. That plan does not just reflect one school, but rather an entire district. Money spent on a roof that houses an over 100-year-old building does not make sense fiscally for the taxpayers. Many of our buildings are old, and addressing those building needs is at a critical point. O4E trusts that our community has put the right people in place to make tough decisions about our district, and the strategic plan outlines what those priorities should be. So based on that, it is our hope that you will be in favor of the district's recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Next is Wayne Youngworth. He will be followed by John Casper.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for taking time to listen to us all tonight. Very impressed by what I've seen in your physical planning for the facility that we're talking about this evening, and I just want to bring up a couple of strong points that are in your study. The cost savings is tremendous, $415,000. Deferred maintenance for that facility, 3.3. You addressed declining enrollment, and one thing that no one's mentioned is you've considered student safety here. Talk about air quality, HVAC. I mean, if you move those children to Jefferson, you're talking about 100-year disparity in age, so. And you have capacity, looking for optimization. It's addressed in your planning for the facility. Jefferson is only seven blocks away. As a child, I grew up in those neighborhoods. I used to walk. I used to walk between all three, South Park, Smith, and Jefferson. So it was no big deal for us as kids. And on one of your proposals is to keep all the kids and put them over at Jefferson. They get to stay together. That's one of the big concerns for parents. I think you've addressed that. One of the things that I don't think a lot of people in the general public understand is that we have five schools in our district, if I'm correct, over 100 years old. That is a big, big deal and it's going to come haunt us as taxpayers, as families, administrators, and so on. This is a reality. I've talked to several people, administrators, and they all agree it's going to be something that's going to rear its head up and we're going to have to address it. So it's going to be some big decisions to make. And the bigger issues are coming. This is only the tip of the iceberg, in my opinion. I have empathy for all the people, the neighborhood, the families. I can understand that. But this change is probably is going to benefit everybody. So I think you have a fiduciary responsibility here to make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Youngworth. One thing we forgot to ask is your address.
60 East Wacau Ave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next is John Casper, to be followed by Jason White. Name and address and your topic, please.
All right. John Casper. I live at 2785 Lillemae Lane in Oshkosh. Here to talk in support of the closing of Smith Elementary School and the transfer of those students into Jefferson Elementary School. I'm representing the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce. I'm the president and CEO of the chamber. We represent 950 members here in Oshkosh that employ over 30,000 people. So it's a significant block that we're representing here. You have a tough decision. Everybody understands that. We've been through many of these discussions over the last, you know, several decades, quite frankly, in terms of changing boundaries and that sort of thing. But a lot of times those discussions are very emotionally charged. You know, I ask as you go through this deliberation and debate that you be logical, you be rational, and do what's best for the taxpayer and make a good business decision. Smith Elementary has served the community very well for 124 years. I mean, it's been an asset for this community, but quite frankly, at that age of a facility, it's become a liability. And it really has probably outlived its usefulness and it's really time to move on. Investing $400,000 into a roof coupled with another $3.3 million of deferred maintenance issues is a lot of money and it really wouldn't be a prudent decision. So quite frankly, it might even be irresponsible if you did not do that. So we're asking you to support the recommendation of the school administration to close that school, bring those kids into Jefferson School and keep them together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Next is Jason White, to be followed by Jen Sullivan. Name, address, and topic, please.
My name is Jason White and I serve as the president and CEO of the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation and I reside at 1204 Fairfax Street. My expertise is not in evaluating buildings for occupancy suitability. I do, however, understand that every owner reaches a point in time where they must decide whether A) their property asset has reached the end of its useful life or B) to continue investing limited resources, excuse me, on maintaining that asset to some degree of viability. I trust Dr. Cartwright and the school board members to make that decision based on the information that you have at your disposal. I appreciate that these issues are looked at from both a business lens and also emotionally. I appreciate in particular the emotions felt when a school closes. Certainly, it's not just a building to see experiences, the relationships and the moments over multiple, often over multiple, family generations. Our family experienced that a little bit too. In my hometown, where I grew up, where my dad, grandfather, and four siblings and I attended a school that closed and that school closed in the last 10 years, which was a right reason, but obviously for different reasons. My observation, having moved to Oshkosh four years ago, is that this is just one of many tough decisions that the school district's leadership will have to make regarding our school facilities. Oshkosh's challenges are larger than any I have seen in various communities where I have lived over the past 20 years. The infrastructure challenges related to Smith and conditions of many of the school district buildings are the result of years of deferred maintenance and investment as a cost-saving mechanisms. Additionally, the state obviously has been unable to provide districts like Oshkosh with the resources to both build and enhance a modern, comprehensive education system and invest in quality facilities at the same time. Still, things cannot continue as they are without cracks in our infrastructure bursting wide open to reveal an avalanche of issues. As difficult as this decision is for all concerned, I applaud the school district's leadership in realizing that these issues can no longer be kicked down the road to be dealt with by future leaders. I am encouraged that the school district has a plan identified to keep students together, perhaps at nearby Jefferson. Smith has historic value and as an aside, we would be willing to partner with the district and others on a redevelopment, reuse of Smith if it would come to that. Such decisions, if handled thoughtfully and diligently, should ultimately lead to more opportunities for our kids and encourage more families to move to Oshkosh. That's especially so if the district demonstrates the ability to make prudent decisions regarding building investments while also planning for the kind of safe, secure, attractive, and high-performing schools our community needs and expects going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. White. Next is Jen Sullivan, to be followed by Carol Schenke.
Am I in the right chair?
Yes.
My name is Jen Sullivan. I live at 856 West 12th Ave. in Oshkosh.
Thank you.
Okay. So I apologize. This is my first time being in a meeting like this, so I don't have anything prepared. So I'm just going to tell you what my thoughts are on this whole process. I have dug deep into this whole situation because I wanted to be well-educated when it came to the future of my children's education. I read through the 30-page packet that was, that came out in 2017 and I also read through the recent packet that just came out as well. I, with all due respect, I must say that I, well, first of all, I understand that there's a lot of money behind this and money doesn't grow on trees. We all know that. And it is a safety issue and you can definitely ask my children to, annoying things I always say is safety first and safety right. So I understand that there is a situation here. However, with all due respect, this was rolled out very, very quickly. Three weeks' notice is not enough time for people to process what is going on. So I am here today to ask that we give Smith Elementary at least, at minimum, one more year. One year to allow teachers to make the best decisions for their careers. One more year to allow people to process what is happening here. One more year for people to, for parents, to make the best decision for their children because right now we're being told you have two schools that we're going to choose for you and if you want to go to out-of-attendance, you can apply for that. I can tell you that's not necessarily the situation because a month ago, I went through this and I was denied two schools that I chose for my kids. Smith Elementary is a fantastic school and I can't imagine losing teachers. Two in particular, Bethany behind me here that works in the secretary office, she is the skeleton of that school. She knows it inside and out and I can't imagine going anywhere else and not having her, excuse me, to tell me where my kids are and that everything's okay and answer any bizarre questions I might have for that day. Amanda Curtis is our kindergarten teacher. She is phenomenal. I cannot tell you how much I have just praised her constantly. She got my six-year-old, my crazy middle child, to read at a first-grade level. I thought he was never going to read, period. Like, she's just so good. We don't want to end up losing teachers that are passionate about their positions and what they're doing. So I think that we seriously need to consider just one more year. It doesn't sound like the roof is going to collapse tomorrow. And then make a decision and let people make a decision for themselves as well. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you for coming. Next is Carol Schenke, to be followed by Amanda Curtis. Name, address, and topic, please.
My name is Carol Schenke. My address is 3064 Lake West Lane. And I'm speaking as a former teacher from Smith. I've been involved with Smith School for 44 years. I spent 31 of my 33 years in Oshkosh and I said, "The school has always been let to go, but it's always, we've always made it." I remember when we had to replace the bathrooms in maybe 1999 because we couldn't find parts for the bathrooms. They were like 100 years old. I mean, I know it's falling, but it's a great school. I said, "We've never had sage there and yet the teachers at Smith School have managed to keep their children above or at the level they should be. It's a very good community. The parents and faculty are so involved with each other." It's a really small school or community school, a neighborhood school. And when we're thinking on the north side, we have six elementary schools, including Oak Lawn. On the south side, we right now, we have three and then we have Lakeside. So we are going down to two elementary schools and then Lakeside. And I said, "I know that it's all about money, but when you look at how long Smith School has been there," and I think parts of that roof are actually original. I think they're from 1896. We also added a beautiful addition on 1996 and I just hate to see that neighborhood school go. I have personally talked to some teachers at Jefferson and there are problems. It's over there with the students and I just hate to put them into this bigger idea and add more people to this. It's hard. It's a neighborhood that needs a little extra help and when you start putting another 80 or 90 children in that, there isn't going to be as much help. Are all the teachers going to be able to go there? Are they going to be able to keep with their, you know, stay with their students? I know this is emotional, but I mean, I also want to think that building is gorgeous. I don't know if you've gone, I'm sure you all went through it. I mean, it's got wing coning. It's got the original marble terrazzo floors. I've taught in almost every room in the first floor. I know there's a little bit of, you know, thing, but that school, I remember 1980 when the school board was going to close Smith School. And we, by '85, we had been kept open, but there had been no, nothing done to that school. In fact, our PTO painted the rooms themselves because we couldn't get the school board or the school system to pay for our rooms. You know, they've changed, they've painted the halls. We've done so much. I know I'm being a little emotional, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Amanda Curtis, to be followed by Ashley Wes... Wes... Wes Lenick? I'm sorry, I didn't say that very well. Ashley W. on Doty Street. Name, address, and topic.
Hi, my name is Amanda Curtis, 1475 County Road I. I'm representing Smith School. I've written a letter to all the school board members, but there's a couple of points that I wanted to put into like public record. I know this is an emotional thing for us, representing the staff. The hardest thing for us, I think, which has been mentioned, is the fact that you have three weeks to decide our fate. Being told that we suddenly have $3.3 million worth of repairs kind of came out of the blue. In the facilities study, I believe that was dated October 2018, they mentioned a partial roof replacement at $300,000. So to have all of these other costs come up is shocking. I can tell you this year, within the building, there has not been any leaks in the roof. I know there's some water that's coming in, the north side of the building, but that building packet of pictures that you were shown, all of those pictures were taken within 15 feet of one another. Oshkosh or, excuse me, Oregon Street is dug up right now. The spring, this winter was wet, a lot of water, a lot of snow. That water's got to go somewhere. So I would ask, I know you came in and you toured, I believe you were with Jim Fox when you toured. I'm wondering if you talked to our building custodian about the issues? Not that I feel that you're not getting accurate details. I just think there's maybe some more information that he could give you. I'd like you to come in and see the beautiful classrooms. I know you toured the parts that had damage. I'm not sure if you saw them all, but we'd like you to come in and take a look at what makes us great. A lot of points I wanted to touch on, but I know that my time is dwindling. The big thing is we've heard repeatedly about being an old car, not putting money into us, and we're so much more than that. I really, really hope, I appreciate Jen Sullivan and her kind words, but I hope you think about, give us at least a year to be together. 125 years, big celebration, going out with the bang. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ashley on Doty Street. Please give us your name correctly, since I didn't do it. Address and your topic. And she will be followed by, I believe it's Anastasia on Bay Shore Drive.
My name is Ashley Wes Lenick and no one can pronounce it. That's totally fine. I live at 1850 Doty Street and I'm here in support of trying whatever measures we can to prolong the life of Smith. I'm going to try not to reiterate points that have already been made. My daughter is in first grade, so she has been at Smith significantly less time than many of the families that are here today and many of the families that have spent so much time advocating for the school over the last week. I am myself very, very proud and very excited to see the passion and the advocacy efforts that have wed in in a week. We've essentially had a week since we found out this news and our neighborhoods and our community have rallied together to contact businesses, contact community leaders, contact our neighbors and people that don't even live in Oshkosh anymore. My chiropractor, for example, has a friend that lives in Milwaukee and she heard about Smith closing and she was ready to do something from Milwaukee. So I'm really proud and I'm excited to see that there's so much love for this school. As everyone else has said, Smith is not the only school that is suffering and needs serious repair. Roosevelt is also another school in our area that's very old and looking at repairs that are very significant in addition to ours. I am not thrilled about the fact that my daughter might be moved to Jefferson. With all due respect, I think expecting my first grader, our kindergarten nurse, to walk a mile one way and then a mile back is not reasonable, especially in winter. I certainly do not want my child doing that. And we bought our house on Doty Street with the understanding that we would be able to walk her daughter to school and that as our daughter got older and, you know, stranger danger goes away and I'm less paranoid, she'd be able to walk herself. And I think my, I don't have a good solution, but my suggestion is also, let's take some more time. If you can't give us a full year, at least take a few more weeks to consider this and evaluate any other options that you might have for funding resources, for better evaluations. I recognize this winter was really hard. It was hard on our home also. Our house is also 120 years old. But I think it would be premature to go ahead and make a vote in a couple of weeks on June 5th. So I don't have the perfect answer, but I ask that you listen to the community, listen to the community members that have participated at our school, and at least take time to thoroughly think of our options. We live in a community that is generous and there are lots of businesses and partners that are willing to look into alternative options for funding measures. I think it would be in everyone's best interest that you at least explore those. Lastly, I'm definitely concerned about class size. When you move all of our students from Smith into Jefferson, I think that's going to make it very challenging for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is, I believe, Anastasia, followed by Brian Maloney. Name, address, and topic, please.
I'm Anastasia Goodnature. I live at 814 Bay Shore Drive. I'm representing my son, a first grader at Smith Elementary. This is very difficult to speak in front of anyone, but I made a promise to my son and I don't intend to try to teach him perseverance without doing it myself. I respectfully, I heard a lot of well-matured men speak about financial issues. I understand. However, I didn't hear a lot of young mothers like myself explaining socioeconomic issues, pockets in the city, unfortunately, also where Jefferson Elementary is, where there is rising gang activity. There is a drug abuse issue in the city, also on the rise. Smith is a historic building. I'm not exactly sure if they closed the school, what goes there? Another chiropractic office or loan store? And in my opinion, we wouldn't perhaps need so many chiropractors or loan stores if we had good schools like Smith Elementary. We moved after my son started and I did all of the paperwork necessary to keep him there. Consistency is key for children at a young age. I don't want my son to... I don't want my son to attend Washington. I don't want him to attend Jefferson. And part of that is because the city itself should address some of the issues that we do have. But I hear more about financial issues than any of those other issues. A school with a good backbone like Smith prevents a future of issues like what we're seeing on the rise. And it's important. It's important to my son, who doesn't want to switch schools. He wants to stay where he's thriving. He is in the reading recovery program. He has some difficulties with learning. And he's thriving. I don't want to change that. I don't want to send him somewhere where they try to medicate him. It was suggested at our tour at Jacob Shapiro before we toured Smith. And it was only due to his exuberance and excitement at meeting new people and attending a new school and learning new things. We were received with much more friendliness and understanding at Smith, and we all work together as a team. And I'm certain that many of the other parents and students feel the same.
Next is Brian Maloney, to be followed by Jennifer Ritten. Perhaps he stepped out. Let's go on to Jennifer Ritten.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Ritten. My address is 3162 Oregon Street. I am not speaking on behalf of any particular group, although I am involved in many of the parent groups at Jefferson South Park and the city PTO. 10 years ago, we chose, our homeschool is Lakeside, we chose to do a different school because of the late start, and it's not a new issue, because 10 years ago, they talked about closing Smith. So, it's definitely not a new issue. We picked Jefferson because that, that was what they were talking about at the time we filled out our forms, so we thought Jefferson was the safer pick for being able to stay in and have that consistency. So I totally understand the emotional aspect of it and getting attached to the school. So you have to do what's best for the district, obviously. I'm not even speaking one way or the other necessarily, but I do think we have to do what's best for the district, and I do think that involves a better long-range plan, because when, if they talked about closing Smith in 1980, and then again in 10 years ago, clearly it's been an issue. So where is that long-range plan? It has to be better, so that we're not pulling this rug at the 11th hour kind of thing. So, I think at Jefferson, we would love to fill up our school and make it a full two-track school, but not an overcrowded two-track school or more. We have seen decreased enrollment over the years. When we first started and we were doing things with the school, we were at 200 people, now we're at about 160. And that has affected participation and that community feel and that involvement. And I know that Smith has faced some similar challenges in the past. So I, I do think that if we banded together, we could build, I have no doubt, we could build a strong Southside community. We know those boundary areas are small, that's how you get small enrollment, there's only so many houses, right? So I do think we could build a strong community, but, you know, we have to, we do have challenges at Jefferson, we have behavioral, we have learning challenges, we have many challenges. But we are a school of recognition, we are beating the odds. So how do we maintain that? If we have to do this, if this is the best choice for the district, how do we maintain beating those odds by pulling in another 160 kids or so? So I think you definitely need to offer the support to the staff and the students. The emotional and the social, social challenges with bringing all those kids in is a huge factor, so I think you need a solid plan for maintaining that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dan Carpenter. To be followed by Linda Reif. Name, address, and topic, please.
Yes, my name is Dan Carpenter, I live at 1804 Georgia Street, and I'm here to talk about the suggested closure of Smith Elementary School. I've been around for a long time, I know some of you up there, but some of you maybe don't know me. I'm a retired teacher, I've had the honor of teaching in every public school in the city of Oshkosh, in the Oshkosh area school district. I, like I say, have been around a long time. I needed a job many years ago, and a friend of mine, very good friend, made a phone call for me. You might have heard about him, his name was Perry Tippler, and I think he's maybe here tonight. I, I've had the honor also of serving on the Oshkosh Public Library Board for 10 years, and as a judge on the Oshkosh Board of Zoning Appeals, dealing with city property issues for 14 years. And that's how I, I think about this tonight. This is not a good idea to close Smith School. Not a good idea at all. If you close Smith School, the property values, the property values in that neighborhood are going to go down immediately. Assessments are going to go down. People aren't going to want houses that are far away from schools, they want houses that are close to schools. Your money we take in for taxes will go down because of assessments and stuff are going down. It just downgrades our neighborhood, our neighborhoods. You know, a few years ago, we needed, the people out in West Haven wanted a new school for their kids, they didn't want to keep busting them in all the time. And they said, "How are we going to do that?" Well, they said, "Let's give everybody in all the schools something." Smith got something, they got the new gym and so forth. That was all added on, and they had support from all the people in the community. The people in this community care about their schools. They care about the schools and their neighborhoods. And they want to see them stay, they're very important to them, and they will support them. Now you have one school that you have to keep open, and that's not such a big deal. You can do it. I know you can do it. It's very important that you keep Smith open. It's important for the, for the neighborhood, it's important for the kids at school. Thank you.
Next is Linda Reif. Name, address, and topic, please.
All right. I'm Linda Reif, and I live at 168 Brockway Avenue. Thanks for listening to all of us parents. It's a really difficult decision, I honestly can say I see both sides. Money is short, and we really all want the best for all the children. We moved to Oshkosh about in 87, and somewhere in 87, 88, I talked to a man who had some institutional memory from here, and I believe he told me, Smith had the longest cycle of up and down in the area. If not, it was one of the longest. He said, "We were ready to close it," and he said, "Then all of a sudden, the numbers go up. My street's only a block long, and three of the people who own houses and live there are over 90 years old." We don't, you know, almost everybody, I'm trying to think. We have one family with kids in grade school. People live in those houses a long time, and so I'm afraid of some of that cycle. You close it, and then you might need it. Years ago, when you closed Green Meadow, you split those kids into two different schools. It was not well-planned out. There was lots of changes that went on, trying to figure out where to hold, keep those kids, and busing and stuff. My kids could have walked to Jefferson. I wouldn't have wanted them at Shapiro with the open concept, but Oshkosh has always valued the neighborhood schools. I think it's important that you keep that in mind, as you're thinking about the money. You keep talking about 124 years old, or 27. When I traveled to Europe, there's buildings 700 or 800 years old, and they're maintained. I know that Oshkosh put off maintenance, and, and now it's this crisis, but I want you to think that it is a gorgeous building, the people come in to that school, and they, we bought our house because of that school. And the friendliness, and that was years ago, and when I still drop off things there, it's still a very friendly school. So I want you to consider this, the long institutional memory, and not close a school that you might need in a few years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go back to Brian Maloney. Is Brian here? All right. Linda was the last person to sign up, so we will close the agenda-related public forum at this time, and move on to the rest of our agenda. That being a workshop, facilities planning, Smith Elementary School. I want to thank everybody who did sign up and speak tonight. As I said earlier, we know this is an emotional issue. We've heard from several people along the way, and we want to thank all of you who have taken time to share with us via phone and email, maybe texting, as well as sharing here tonight. So we do appreciate that. We have, we are one board member short right now, so I'd like to just pause for a second until he turns. Give him about 30 seconds, hopefully. Looks like we have many members from our administrative team here this evening, starting with Dr. Kim Brown and Mrs., well, almost, Dr. Kim Brown. He's going to go back and forth, thank you. Mrs. Schnorr from the Business Services Department, Dr. Gunlock, our Deputy Superintendent, Ms. Conrad from the Curriculum area, Mr. Fox from Maintenance and Facilities, and...
Sally from Bray.
Thank you. Very good. All right, I think we'll get started, and hopefully Mr. Ishel will return shortly.
Okay, I will, Clint from Bray and Jim Fox will start us off, talking about the overview
We're going to start.
Well, thank you, Board, for the opportunity to speak again with you tonight. Again, my name is Clint Sully with Bray Architects. Just wanted to touch on the process that we've gone through to date, and kind of explain the path that we've taken on this assessment of the district. As you can see up on the screen, more or less, there have been four phases that we've gone through, or I should say, are going through. Phase one, the facilities study was completed in 2017. I apologize if I don't have the exact date, but I believe we were with the Board in December of 2017, with the full report at that time, as well as with the budgeting effort that, that we had done to date at that point. Just kind of want to explain quickly what the facilities study is, and continues to be. Again, it was really an assessment of the existing conditions of the buildings. A big portion of that is more or less understanding the buildings, so we looked at the evolution diagrams, the dates, the additions that were put onto the buildings, combining all of the floor plans, and giving the district kind of accurate information, or as accurate as we could make it for a given time, for all of the buildings within the district. We looked at systems summaries, so we went through the buildings with our engineer partners to look at the plumbing, the HVAC, the electrical needs within the buildings. We toured each of the buildings, I believe, accompanied by District Buildings and Grounds staff, and Jim Likely was as part of that, as well as, we always try to meet with the custodians in each of the buildings to get some of their information, because again, they know the most about those buildings. There was also a needs assessment portion of that, which, again, looked, tried to identify needs within the building that aren't specific to capacity, that aren't specific to educational needs, it's specific to the building, so the conditions of walls, floors, ceilings, exterior walls, windows, those types of things. We looked at the sites for each of the buildings, in terms of problems with drainage, conditions with pavement, and those types of things. There was ADA assessment for each of the buildings, trying to identify those needs within each structure. We also kind of, again, called a bunch of information the district had, looking at the roof conditions, previous reports, and kind of combined that all into one resource for consideration, and then also reviewed the exterior doors, again, and just overall exterior condition of the building. Again, what that phase one was not, again, was, it was not an analysis of the quantity, size, or quality of educational spaces. It wasn't any type of solutions, so we weren't looking, you know, if a building needed an addition or some type of a renovation. It did not review educational capacity for the buildings. It was not, and it, and the other main thing, also, there was no prioritization. So again, we wanted to give the district a full grasp of what the needs were within the overall district, district-wide. Again, from phase two, the district then hired the University of Wisconsin Applied Population Lab to help, again, build, build, build our, the information district-wide. So we received that information, and again, I believe it was presented, I believe that was early in 2018. Again, phase three, then, the capital improvements cost, so based on that phase one, we then said that we need to, again, transfer that into dollars. And again, that was, I believe, completed in late 2017, and then presented to the Board. Again, I don't remember, was it December of 2017, or maybe it might have even been January of 2018. We have also kind of met with the Board on several other occasions in October of 2018, and then more recently in March of 2019, again, kind of with the overview of a lot of this information. The phase four ongoing, again, on a very macro level, and we're really just kicking off this effort, as we're starting to work through and look, take that facility study and kind of assimilate that into some type of a master plan for the district, and again, very early on in that process right now. Again, the, as you look at this, again, the initial, again, district-wide number being over 100 million is a large number, and it's a staggering number. But again, the one thing, you know, as you're going through, the buildings are very well-maintained. But again, the, some of the deferred maintenance is starting to catch up, and again, areas are in need of attention. Again, I kind of explained before what was and wasn't included. So again, the, that third point, to ensure the buildings can continue to meet the needs of the students in the Oshkosh community, I think that's a really important point, because as, again, as we look towards what goals we want for the district overall, those, that deferred maintenance cost really doesn't include, again, any additions or modifications to the buildings themselves. So again, as we look towards the future, we have to kind of consider and weigh all of those factors as well.
I think it's important to point out here that the district's been under revenue limits since 93, 94. So, and revenue limits have been very restrictive, and limited the amount that we have to spend on fixing our facilities.
So, go ahead. Sure. I just... I just, also, again, we wanted to point out, the 3.3 million for Smith, kind of on a, per-square-foot basis, would represent kind of the highest total for all of the elementary schools. So, again, and, again, I know we're talking dollars and cents here and money, but, again, in terms of kind of evaluating it on a per-square-foot basis, it ranks kind of the highest among all of the elementary schools in terms of overall need.
So, just winding the clock back a little bit, one of the things that we've been trying to do for the past several years is take a very strategic approach to the broader issues, and Smith notwithstanding, the idea of using a strategic approach to how we deal with district needs. Back in about 2010, we were not really sure how we were going to be dealing with all of these needs, because there were just so many of them. The first couple of strategic plans were an attempt to get at that, but they really focused on some other issues, improving technology access for teachers and students and providing the training and professional development around that, but also getting at some of the facility issues through the energy efficiency exemptions that this district took advantage of. That allowed us to stem the tide in terms of boiler replacements and windows, et cetera. So there were some significant improvements made there. There were three referenda in that timeframe. Sometimes people are not fully aware of what those were all for. There was a referendum in 2012 that allowed us to build the new Oaklawn. There was a referendum in 2014 that was our first referendum for learning, and that was divided into two chunks. The first chunk was to maintain existing operations. That's maintain the programming for students in the classroom. That was not for maintenance of buildings at all. The other portion of that went to our Learning Without Limits Initiative, which is how we provide students in grades three through 12 with access to technology, as well as our K-2 students. Then there was another referendum in 2016. That was also for operations. Those last two were for seven-year terms. The only difference in the second referendum is a small portion of the first year was used to start putting in security cameras into our schools. So, those are the referenda that had come during that timeframe. What we're looking at here is we've, the low-hanging fruit of facilities has been addressed to a point, but we really need a long view going forward, and that is not my opinion. That is the opinion of the citizens of Oshkosh, the 800 or so who filled out the survey that gave a lot of information to the district. One of the top priorities was, we need to do something to modernize our facilities and to right-size our facilities as we go. So, it is our intent, it always has been our intent, to continue to focus on those facilities, and that's been sort of, that's predated the current situation, and will certainly be something we take forward.
So, as Clint had indicated on the facilities plan, okay, as Clint had indicated on the facilities usage plan, the building was built, the core part of the building was built in 1895 with a 1996 addition. There's been significant proactive monitoring and repairs that we have done over the decades as a maintenance team to support Smith Elementary School. But, point of fact is that the amount of work that we can do as a maintenance department to try to maintain facilities can only go so far, and it is a result of our inability to provide and renovate buildings at the scale that Smith needs, is what you're seeing within our capital plan and our deferred maintenance. We have reached a point in time, as we've indicated in our study in 2017, of the significant amount of deferred maintenance that is present, and we are now at a point today where we're facing extensive needs that really need to be addressed immediately. Some of the immediate needs that we have indicated include replacing the original roof on the 1895 building. As indicated by several members that have spoken here this evening, we have roof leaks in that particular part of the structure, and the roof needs to be removed and fully replaced. We have foundational problems and water infiltration into occupied spaces in the lower levels. Those need to be corrected. They do require dehumidification at all times, and they create problems with teaching and occupancy in those areas. That includes replacing masonry block from the foundation, eliminating standing water in certain parts of unoccupied parts of that building, up to and including one part of that facility, which is our mechanical space and boiler room. Believe it or not, that boiler room does have existing coal bins from back in the day, as it were. So, those types of spaces, when standing with water, do affect the air quality in that facility. You will also see as part of our short- and long-term needs, items such as exterior envelope tuck pointing, replacing our galvanized domestic water piping, which is, again, the piping that handles all the water to the water phones in the bathrooms, replacing and updating electrical panels in the existing building, replacing dated plumbing fixtures. This is really a renovation. I've been asked why that number is so large, and I think we need to remember that many of those bathrooms, everything is encased in concrete and buried in massive walls. So, when you try to replace a fixture, as a common maintenance item, really, you're looking at a full renovation of that particular bathroom. Backup generators to serve the electrical distribution system, the sanitary system. Many of these things are overlooked as something that we just assume is working properly, but point of fact is quite old. Replacing classrooms and common area floors, which are original to the building, doors, ceilings, windows, updating the windows to meet current standards. Installing air conditioning, which is not necessarily a repair function, but ought to be a function that we're looking at within all of our schools, try to keep the students in a comfortable learning environment. And then, again, dealing with the moisture issues, as I had started this discussion on at the lower level.
I have a question, Jim.
Yes.
Someone in the audience had mentioned, and I do remember this also, that the replacement of the roofing. Now, a couple of months ago, we were told that it could be fixed, and now it needs a full replacement. I did go and take a tour of Smith School, and you had pointed out to me that, I just want to make this clarification, that a couple of months ago, when we, when you guys had given that original assessment, and then now, they actually went up there and cut out part of the roof, and it's not salvageable, from my understanding.
Correct. So with regard to the roofing, it's an asbestos roof, so that the roofing material will need to be removed before anything can be done. The softening is a perimeter of that particular facility, and when they built that, they put a gutter system built into that roofing. It's a practice that isn't done for quite a while, many decades. That all needs to be removed and rebuilt, is rotted. You're correct. We had done what they call destructive analysis on part of the roofing, where we had an engineer, we had a carpentry firm, and we had McKinstry, who was operating as our Act 32 Energy Efficiency Consultant. We met as a large group, we did cut a hole into the soffit so we could actually get into, physically into that structure to take a look at it. We knew at that point that we had a water leak, but we really, truly didn't know what we were dealing with. Once we were in there, we could see that we do, in fact, have rot. Much of that roof has to come off. It has to be replaced on the exterior with the removal of all the rotted wood.
Also, a comment was made about the pictures in there. I want to let you guys, I definitely will tell, I was there when Jim took those pictures. Those aren't old pictures. I was there, I actually saw some more damage that we hadn't seen prior to that day, and they are not within 15 feet of each other. When I was in that basement, doing and even going through some of the different hallways, I was there with Jim, and we added pictures, who, and I had seen some of them, so those are not all within one area together. I just wanted to, that it is throughout the different spaces in that school.
So, enrollment, it is true, Smith is declining, as you can see, in the K-5 enrollment.
So is Jefferson, in fact, and they kind of become dueling banjos sometimes between who's going to be smaller than whom, and they're both about 160 students right now. So, the enrollment has declined, and they both are about at 160, and that is with their out-of-attendance students included. That is without the EC and 4K students at Jefferson. So that's just K-5 enrollment comparing site to site.
All right, as far as taking a look at buildings that are larger, we can look at schools, when you have a larger school, you can have more tracks. For people who are listening from home, when we talk about a track school, we're talking about the number of classrooms at a grade level. And so when we talk about three to four-track schools, we're talking that we have more grade levels, and there are some, definitely, some educational efficiencies and opportunities with that. The big piece is sometimes just allowing for flexibility in student placement. I know that when we have one or two-track schools, sometimes we have friends who have been together for a while, and it would be best if they could be separated, but when you're in a one-track or a two-track school, it's sometimes hard to find a good placement to make sure that people continue getting along. Music, art, and physical education specialists would be available in the school for the full day, which also allows for flexibility in scheduling. And then the comprehensive academic services allow for an inclusionary model for students. Sometimes at our smaller schools, we are sharing special education teachers who are traveling from one school to another, and sometimes when they are out of the building, that's when you really do need them in the building. Yes?
I also wanted to add that we heard from the nursing staff that it would, this also is true for nurses who are traveling from school to school, that if they could have three and four-track schools, that would provide a lot of efficiency for them.
Correct. And so, again, the additional supports, you're going to have more time in the building. Some of the staffing will be there full-time. Others, you're going to have an increase or additional supports, like the behavioral and technology support. There would be more FTE for that. And then, of course, there's also the added bonus that teachers have somebody to collaborate with in the building. Sometimes if you are by yourself, you are by yourself, and it would be nice to be able to co-plan with someone within the building.
Okay, so that leads us to potential solutions. Obviously, inaction is not an option. As a Board, you have to do something, and we realize it's a very difficult decision, as has been pointed out, that people appreciate the difficult decision. And we are looking at a district-wide master facility plan. Unfortunately, though, because of the condition of the building, it forces us to recommend use of some decisions. And one is obviously to fix or replace the roof, and doing the ongoing maintenance of totaling over $3.3 million. However, that solution doesn't address some of the things that Kim Brown was just talking about, and some of the educational needs of the building. And obviously, then, the second option is to close the school.
So, to help the Board members and those at home who are listening and watching this particular presentation, we did identify six different areas, just on a cursory tour of the particular facility, you know, areas that were identified as part of the facilities plan. The first area shows part of that failed softening system. If we could cycle through to the next slide, please. There we go. That will show the rain, as the rain is coming through the gutter, and it's actually coming out the bottom of the soffit. It's inside of there where you'll find the rotted wood that we spoke about earlier. The next slide is evidence of water infiltration through part of the foundation on one end of the school. This is, this is common in several areas. We actually, in this particular area, we keep dehumidification running, again, to try to maintain air quality in that particular area. The next slide is a picture of the mechanical space. This was, this particular room was freshly painted in 2016, I believe, we had our Act 32 as part of Smith's HVAC renovation. So you can see the quality and of the paint, and what's happening to the paint degradation through the water infiltration in that particular area and the high humidity, and how it impacts that surface. The next slide, you'll notice on the bottom, a missing piece of concrete and clay, this fire block that you're seeing on that wall as well, and that is a result of long-term moisture presence. It actually, that particular area, the masonry actually just rotted away into what the end result was, was just a pile of sand, is what it looked like. So, as water comes through the foundation, and there's evidence of long-term water infiltration on the walls, where you've got a buildup of minerals, you also have areas where some of the masonry is completely gone, as evidenced by this photo. The next photo was just indicative of water leakage at some point, second floor, through ceiling tile. It was not near the outside of the building. And the last slide in this particular set was moisture that was actually found just in the last week or so through one of our, one of our walk-throughs. You can see the bubbling paint underneath the pole station for the fire alarm system. We tapped on that, it was still wet, so the water had worked its way down the wall, had just shown itself. That was not there last fall or throughout the winter, so that is damage that just occurred. And you can see on the picture next to it, it extends all the way up the stairway as well. This is not uncommon at Smith. These are the types of repairs that as a maintenance department, our painter frequently has to, you know, he ends up having to scrape off all the paint and plaster and try and to patch this back together again.
So, one of the things that we were also asked to do is come up with other options, and obviously, a second option would be to close Smith, and the moment we looked at that option, the first and foremost, we had to take a look at, what do we do to make sure that we don't miss a beat in terms of student instruction? Where do the students go? Where's their room, et cetera? So there's three different scenarios that we took a look at. 2A was divide and transfer the students to Jefferson Elementary School and Shapiro, okay, split the attendance boundary. Option 2B was to transfer all the Smith students to Shapiro, and Option 2C was to transfer all the Smith students to Jefferson. We also realize that we still have our out-of-attendance area process, and as was mentioned previously, parents can request other schools in different neighborhoods if they wish. We have a lot who do, and we say yes to the vast majority of those. We like to say yes. We only say no when there's no room, but sometimes there is no room, so there's really no guarantees. So, that has allowed us, as the Board knows, because I presented on this to you before, has allowed us to load balance our schools, and it becomes a win-win. We're able to say yes to the parent, and we're able to help load balance where kids go and make sure we optimize the usage of space.
All right, so, taking a look at option number two, more in-depth. Option 2A is, where are the students going to go? So, option 2A looks at students go to Jefferson and Shapiro, and that would mean dividing and transferring Smith students between Jefferson and Shapiro. Advantages are combined enrollment numbers at both schools would create a more ideal situation and provide efficiencies. Each of the schools would be two-track, so it would do a nice job in balancing the two student populations. Disadvantages is that it separates students and divides a neighborhood, and this was a concern as we talked through this disadvantage. It impacts two schools. Obviously, Smith is impacted, their students, their staff, and their families, but it impacts Jefferson, and it impacts Shapiro STEM Academy. The attendance area boundaries would need to be revised, and there would be a lot of discussion on how to revise this and how to do this in order to equally imbalance both Shapiro and Jefferson. Shapiro, if you don't know, is an open-concept school, and when you add more students into an open-concept school, it will absolutely result in a louder school environment with more students. Additional costs are going to be realized at Shapiro, because bringing in additional students into that environment, they currently have something called stations, and so we would need to create more stations, which includes installing more dividers to make those classroom spaces. We would be moving students, some of the students, into an older Oshkosh area school district facility that also is going to have to have and require building maintenance and disrupt students a second time, once we start to go through and say, how is this all going to work out in larger facilities planning? Shapiro STEM Academy was built in 1970, and if we're familiar with North and other schools that were built in the '70s, open concept was very popular during that time. Space for early childhood and 4K classrooms would need to be created, with limited to no current availability in the district. We are, every year, we are looking at classroom spaces for early childhood and 4K. for early childhood and 4K as we're doing that. So option two B is now let's look at transferring all of Smith's students into Shapiro STEM Academy. What would that look like? Advantages were Smith's students and families would remain together. And that was definitely a consideration when we were thinking of the staff, the students, the families. How can we keep that family, that school community together? Open concepts allows for rooms to be shifted based on the number of students. And so the beauty of an open concept is that you can add additional spaces, add those additional stations to accommodate more students, so it can flex within the space. Disadvantages, the open concept will result in louder school environment with more students, so this would actually be even more students than option two A. Additional costs, once again, for the dividers to create those additional stations, and those stations would be smaller. Once again, we'd be using an older school facility, and we would still be looking for space for 4K and early childhood classrooms that would need to be shifted. And the third option within option two, option two C, is transfer all Smith's students to Jefferson Elementary. The advantages here is once again, looking at Smith's students and their families remain together, that school community stays together. Smith's students remain within walking distance to a school. A newer Ashkasharia School District facility can be in full use. Currently, Jefferson is not, maximum capacity isn't at being used right now at Jefferson. And Jefferson Elementary was built in 2000, so it is one of our newer facilities in the Ashkasharia School District. Combined enrollment numbers will create an optimal situation for efficiencies because it would be a true two-track school, and it would allow for improved ABC scheduling. And for those of you that are going, what is ABC scheduling? That is our rotation that we use for our specialists in art, music, and FIAD. And just two years ago, Kim, was it two years ago? We just increased our art, music, and FIAD time for students by rotating through this ABC schedule. And when you have a two-track or bigger school, you do have full-time staff, and this is definitely a plus for students. Yes?
What would the percent capacity be at Jefferson with all the Smith, all the Jefferson?
Right now, with all the students who are out of attendance, we didn't, nobody's moved anywhere, it would be 320 students. Because they're each at about a, one's at 159, one's at 161 right now. So those two together would be about 300. We have approximately 40, maybe a little less than 40, out-of-attendance students who have room in their home school that they could be sent back potentially. That would get it down to about 280, maybe around 290.
What's the capacity of Jefferson, though?
Well, that's a variable, depending upon how you're going to utilize the rooms. But we took all the room spaces. There's 13 classrooms would be needed. And that's while keeping your art and music spaces, et cetera. And there's 13 classrooms available, so. So it would be, I would probably say the capacity of that building would be about 300.
I was going to ballpark 300.
So we would be over, we'd be a little bit over. We'd be pretty high, is what you're saying, if everybody went?
It would be a, it would be a full Jefferson, yeah. And the attendance boundary would be about perfect. The two combined. Right now, the attendance boundaries are a little small, and they're, that's why this.
So the boundaries, there's no, oh, I'm so sorry.
What would be the longest walking distance for a family going to Jefferson from Smith?
Going to Jefferson from Smith, it would be 1.3 miles, would be the max. The average for the district is about double that.
That, I was going to ask that. So if we move them, there's nothing's on here about that, so I would assume it's not an issue. But if we move them all to Jefferson, there's no busing on here. So we, we're no busing, because the furthest is 1.3?
Because we're, the law says we don't have to bus anybody less than two miles. And because we offer municipal transportation in Ashkash, the law says that we don't have to provide transportation to anybody within the city boundaries. And we currently do not unless the area is declared hazardous. So no one is bused within the city limits here. Again, unless there's a special circumstance or the area is declared hazardous.
Yes, I have a question to follow up on Alison's comment. So looking at the Bray work, that, I guess I'm just trying to understand this. A building area per square foot, Jefferson is our third-largest elementary school. So we have several other elementary schools who have a smaller square foot but have 460, 400 students. So is that just because of classroom availability?
Yeah, so when Jefferson was built in 2000, there was new, there was improved and new thinking about how much square foot, square footage would be need for classroom spaces. So when you look at Jefferson, they really planned for larger classroom spaces. So for example, the kindergarten classrooms are 1396, 1,396 square feet. So that is pretty large compared to other classrooms within the district.
Yes, that was my assumption. I just wanted to clarify that. So the combined students would be in some of the largest classrooms in our district. Even, no? Yeah, okay, so that's the explanation for that, sorry.
Yeah, so continuing on from here, there was a few disadvantages that I wanted to highlight that were discussed. One is that Jefferson families in the community know that there is already some issues with traffic and parking around the school. So we would be increasing that traffic, and there are definitely limited parking areas. And then, once again, even whether it's Shapiro or Jefferson, we have to be considering early childhood and 4K classrooms that would need to be shifted to accommodate students. So pulling this all together, the recommendation on the table is option two C, is to transfer all students from Smith to Jefferson Elementary. And it sounds like you, our board was asking questions in that direction. So, once again, the big advantages here is that Smith's students and families remain together in, as a school community. They remain within a walking distance to a school. So a lot of times in the school district, we say this is a walking school, or this is a busing school. This would definitely be a walking school. This is a newer school facility, and we would be maximizing it to its full potential. Combined enrollment numbers will create that more ideal situation for scheduling and services and specialists. So there are disadvantages, and I just highlighted the part about the traffic, the traffic, the parking, et cetera. So solutions to those particular disadvantages or barriers is creating a staff parking lot to reduce street parking congestion during drop-off and pickup. So we would need to be looking into that. Definitely relocating current bus parking area to reduce congestion during drop-off and pickup. So working with families in the community of how traffic flow needs to go during drop-off and pickup times. And then relocating early childhood and 4K classrooms. And so working with our other school communities, school buildings, to make sure that we have room for all of our ready-for-learning students. And one other thing, because Sue reminded me about this. Smith Elementary School was, last year was awarded CLC, a 21st Century Learning Center grant, as a lighted schoolhouse. We have contacted the Department of Public Instruction, and that grant is transferable. And their quote is, is that wherever the students go, the grant goes. So if, by keeping the students together in one school and going with option two C, the plan would be to move the lighted schoolhouse and the CLC to Jefferson with the students, so it would follow them. So we would also be leveraging that grant and providing lighted schoolhouse services to both our Jefferson and our Smith combined families.
Some of the immediate cost savings are personnel savings. The majority of the educating professionals, the majority of those staff, will be actually moved with a student. But we would have some personnel savings, the principal, secretary, custodian, a library media specialist. We were going to add a full-time counselor to that building, so that's also a savings. So between those, and then the utility savings is about 415,000. Now, we have positions for those people who actually, the few people that are truly going to be losing their jobs. We do have some vacancies in the district that we will be giving them the first opportunity to apply for or slide into. And there's some other savings, you know, there's, as we said, the art, music, and FIAD travel between facilities now. They obviously won't have to do that with a larger school. You have $3.3 million that we haven't budgeted for, but that for capital maintenance. And then, we have done energy efficiency projects to increase and improve the HVAC at that building. But according to Jim Fox, that, about 70,000 in the materials that we spent at Smith can now be moved to Jefferson to save some of the upgrades that we need to do at Jefferson from an HVAC standpoint. We can move some of that equipment. And I don't think, based on this tonight, this doesn't have to be a decision that's even made soon. But there are some options to think about. You could sell the entire building. And as I told you before, that there was a deed restriction on that. But in doing research with legal counsel, we have found that because it is such an old deed, that that is outdated, and you no longer have to comply with that deed restriction. And we sent you that legal opinion today. And that legal opinion basically just said, if the property was sold, proceeds shall be expended for the purpose of providing additional public school playground space in said city. It doesn't mean that you could still do that, but legal counsel says that because it is so old, you are not blinded, or you're not bound by that anymore. The other option is to explore using the 1996 edition.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peshal wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So just a question to that. Is that, is that deed restricted to the current playground space? Or is that deed restricted to the whole property? Because from what I understand, there's several deeds that are, that make up that property.
We sent that all off to legal counsel, so I don't, I assumed it was the entire property, but.
I didn't read it that way.
But it could, it's just the playground space? Okay, it is just the playground space.
Just point of clarification, just for everyone's aware. Because it is such a historical, the deed to that site is so old at this point in time, we have already reached out to the title company and have already put in a request in order to do, basically, to research the title on it and, you know, to ensure that there aren't any clouds on that title. It, because of the age of the deed and the title, it does require a specialized research. I have already authorized personnel in order to pay the fees that are associated with that in order to conduct a specialized research project on it. Unfortunately, it does take some time. And again, tonight, please understand, for this particular slide, it's most essential to understand that we're letting you know or informing you that we're not just going to let the property sit there, that we are actively working on this and will, in the future, be bringing forward potential solutions once the board has come to a decision as to how they would like to proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Curt Wray. Any other questions? I'm sorry, okay.
And it actually goes back to Jefferson. The parking lot space that was being suggested to be built, where is that, where would that, where would that come from?
It's a very, excuse me, thank you. It's a very preliminary idea at this point. But on the east side of the school, there is a small parcel of land. Over the last several years, we've started, we've built one, we're in the process of building a second one. But these, these small 25, 35-stall parking lots on these small lots have been just enough to kind of get staff off the street and create more opportunities for parents on the street. So we're looking to the east side of that particular school. Again, very preliminary idea, no discussions have been had with the city yet with regard to, you know, variances and setbacks and really trying to engineer that property to see how we could maximize that space.
So we own that parcel currently?
We own the parcel of green space, correct, up to the residential property to the east.
And that, is that current green space that children use to play in and recreate in?
They do not, maybe on a special occasion, the playground itself and the kickball area that they have is to the south of that and borders on Kent Street.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
The other option is that we, because part of the building is a 1996 edition, it is possible to demolish the old part and turn that into something else, office space. We talked about rec department. We've talked, that that doesn't, obviously not part of the decision, but that that's something that we can continue to look at and evaluate. And we'll continue to explore those additional options.
So in terms of final thoughts and next steps, this is a very difficult situation, obviously. But it also gives us an opportunity, an opportunity to move down the road that the community has suggested is going to be important in the next third version of the strategic plan. But also, we're very fortunate that two of the schools that are, that can fit together are in boundaries that touch each other, that are relatively small boundaries, that we're in shrinking enrollment areas. So this really does, you know, we're quite fortunate that Jefferson isn't on the other side of town, that the space is attached, and this would still be a walking school, per se. So that is an advantage. That's something that we were fortunate to have. And in terms of next steps, we'll continue to share whatever information we find in a variety of venues, including a frequently asked question document. Kim, you want to just switch one more slide? Thank you, thank you. All right. There are three information sessions for families. One on Thursday, May 23 at 6:00 PM at Smith. There's one at Tuesday, May 28 at 6:00 PM at Jefferson. And then there's a third one at Wednesday, May 29 at 6:00 PM at Shapiro. And of course, anyone can attend any or all sessions, or repeat sessions if they wish. That's part of trying to get as much information out there as possible. And we have a frequently asked questions document that we are updating very often as new questions come up. Because as you can imagine, a lot of people have a lot of different questions, and we research the answers and get them out there to everyone as quickly as possible. Any questions?
Alison.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Garner. I have a couple of questions. What is at risk at Jefferson, it's a beating-the-odds school, if we doubled their enrollment? They just won another award, and I'm worried about what's going to happen.
I don't know, I guess I don't know what you mean by risks. I think that whenever you combine school families, you have students making transitions. You have, I mean, that impacts students and their, and their learning, et cetera. But you're looking at merging two high-quality schools. So Jefferson is a beating-the-odds school, and Smith significantly exceeds expectation. Both schools have been working incredibly hard with their students and their school communities to make those improvements and reduce the achievement gap. So, yes, as you merge two families together, there's definitely going to be some bumps and some issues with transition. But all of those with, I think, can be overcome. And our families and our staff are terrific, and so.
Will they have, will they lose their AGR?
No, we actually researched that as well. And so when you look at Jefferson and any achievement gap reduction school, that's what AGR stands for, also formerly known as Sage. There are three different strategies that the, it's almost like a rebate. The money comes back to the school district that we can use in order to reduce gaps, correct? And so those strategies include class size reduction, includes targeted tutoring, and includes professional development and coaching. So all three strategies. And you can use a different strategy per grade level or per classroom. The school and its school community can decide which strategy best meets that grade level. So it's flexible. We haven't in the past chosen, we've usually chosen to reduce class size. We have used one other strategy, which is the tutoring one. We've used that at Roosevelt before, when we were above the 18-student mark.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Olmsted?
I have a few questions. I do want to say something personal here, though, about everybody that showed up in Smith's family. And Mrs. Curtis, my son had Mrs. Curtis years ago, like, two decades ago, in preschool. So I do have quite a history with your team there. I've also read in her classroom, and my son actually started at Smith's school. I was a Smith parent. I did go to that school. My son started his. I was a Smith parent. I did go to that school. My son started his career there. And then we went to Lakeside. I was part of, as two other parents on this, were part of Green Meadow. My son was pulled out of, out of Lakeside and was put over to Green Meadow. That finally, he did not be able to, he was, he finished at Green Meadow and went on to middle school. Then my daughter was at Lakeside and got pulled out and put at Terry Tipler, Perry Tippler here for her two years. And then my youngest finally got to stay in one school. So, I completely, completely empathize with all of you. All my children have gone through this. This is why I'm on the board. This is why I ran. This is why we, I care so much. I know what Smith has for a family. I know how much they care. I was there. I was a parent there. I lived, I bought my first house on 18th Street. I lived on an apartment on 18th Street, and then we moved a little bit further south because I kept having kids. So, I needed a bigger house. So, I, we do sympathize with you. I know Stephanie's parent, our children have gone through the Green, or not Green Meadow, I don't know if yours were old enough, but the Tippler. And same with Allison's. We've all gone through that. And, and so I just want to let you know that, from my heart, I do, I get it. I really do get it. There was some questions about one more year for, just giving the Smith School one more year. So, I, my question is, is it safe to put these kids at that school for one more year? I know when I went and saw the building, and when I saw that roof, and I saw the, you know, the boiler room and those things, I thought about my own children being in there, and I thought, you know, I, I have my own feelings on that. But is it, is it even, you know, is that realistic for that to even have, I mean, a whole... I guess I think about the roofs that are collapsing all over town, and that terrifies me. Like, Syria, how, you know, that roof dilapidated that quickly with such a bad storm, bad winter, that that makes me nervous.
I mean, this bad last winter, being the winter it was, hasn't, hasn't helped at all from that roof. And I think that's part of the deterioration. But to say it's, to say for sure, it won't last a year, we can't say that. There's so many unknowns. But do you want to take that risk?
Right. Okay.
But I can't say for sure.
That liability of it, right.
And we tried to get the contractor who looked at it to weigh in, and they're, they're never going to commit one way or the other because they're not going to want to take that liability. So, would I say for sure, it won't last a year? No, I cannot say that.
All right. Carolyn?
I just wanted to echo what Kelly was saying about the Green Meadow situation in Lakeside. I have been in your shoes. This is a very difficult process. I acknowledge the emotion that you have. And, you know, I'm not taking this decision lightly because as a result of Green Meadow closing, my children actually were never in the same school. So, I had a kindergartner at Lakeside, and my boys were at Tippler. And then at one point, I even had them, three kids in three schools. And I swore, when I got on the board, that I would not let another situation like that happen. And what I like about the option that we are receiving tonight is that moving to Jefferson gives your community the opportunity to stay together. It doesn't divide families. To me, that is, moving to Shapiro is not an option. I, I would prefer to see the Smith families stay together. I also wanted to comment about the timing of how this is happening. I know that it's been very fast, and it is in fact, the board that has been trying to make this decision quickly because you have three parents on this board who went through the Green Meadow closing and found out in the middle of the summer, and we did not want to do that. So, the board has been pushing to make a decision on this issue because we want parents and families to have as much time as possible to digest this information. I also, like Kelly, wanted to think about a year option because I, I don't like closing a school without giving families notice. It's traumatic. It's upsetting. But I, I have toured Smith, and, you know, I, I see the pottery kiln in the bathroom, and I see the library in the basement with two small windows. And I, I don't think it's a great school for our kids. I think that after being there and seeing that building, that when we know our students deserve better, we should do better. And what makes Smith great is the people inside of it. It's the teachers, it's the students, it's the families. That is what makes Smith great, in my opinion. And the building in itself is, is not something that I see as a great investment for our community. So, I just had one other thing to say. I'm losing my track. I also just wanted to point out that in, in looking at the numbers, we do like our neighborhood schools. And Smith is 160 kids, Jefferson is 160 kids. Those aren't really neighborhood schools. They're kind of micro schools. And when you look at some of our other schools like Traeger, 450 students, Franklin, 378, Reed, 350, the Smith-Jefferson combined would still be smaller than all of those schools. So, it still would be what I would consider a neighborhood school, which again, is another reason that I am supportive of the Jefferson option. This is not about money for me. It's about kickstarting what needs to happen, which is a discussion of our larger facilities issues. A hundred million in repairs across all of our schools is not sustainable. So, this, to me, is jumpstarting a conversation that we need to have in terms of five, 10, 20-year planning. Most school districts have a plan that says, in five years, we are going to do this. In 10 years, we're going to build a new school. In 20 years, we're going to retire this school. We don't, we do not have that, and we need that. And that's what this study has been doing for the past two years, is looking at each building so we can make a, a decision on all of our schools and look really closely on where it makes sense to invest. So, to me, this is jumpstarting that conversation, and that needs to happen quickly. And I would like to have something in place, you know, that can be applied to not this school year, but the following school year. I, I just, I'm, I, this is very difficult for me, and I just, I empathize with you. And that's basically the point I wanted to say. But I will be supporting the district's recommendation on this issue.
Thank you, Mrs. Garner. Mr. Evans?
Just actually joining the conversation. And I'm going to be repeating what other people said, just because that's on my brain worse. I got to talk how I thought of it. But this was supposed to be part of a longer conversation on our facility study, and Smith decided to jump ahead of everybody with a, with a bad roof and needed to be talked about outside of that larger conversation. And as Stephanie and Kelly did say, the board was the one that kind of pushed this because if we were talking about this as part of a larger conversation, came out in mid-August saying, we decided to close Smith, that would be a huge shock to the system. And we thought, as we could give you, if we do decide to go this way, if we give you more, as much time as possible, would be better. As far as for the quickness of it, I, myself and Mr. Peschall were students of Sunset. And although I was not a student there when they closed it, Dr. Herzog told me he had about a weekend to find new...
It was, it was a Friday. I was approached, I was working at the central office in the district at that time, and the superintendent came to me that morning, nine or 10 o'clock, and said, "By Monday, you need to find a facility to absorb every one of those Smith students and their teachers."
Sunset.
Sunset, I'm sorry. "And you need to be operational by Monday." We made it by Tuesday because we couldn't get all the phone hookups and the technology hookups. And the only reason that worked, or a reason that it worked, was because St. Peter's School, which was attached to St. Peter Church on the corner of Algoma and Jackson, had a, a school that they only used for catechism on Wednesday nights. And so, it was set up as classrooms. And so, the Smith teachers taught all day long.
Sunset.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. The Sunset, they both start with an S. The Sunset teachers came after teaching a full day. They were tired. It was in the winter. And they came and looked at the facility. They weren't overjoyed with it. They were relatively small classrooms. And over the weekend, the parents were notified, and the custodial staff and the, and the teaching staff were expected to pack and move everything into these classrooms. The crucifixes did come down, except for the religious ed nights, but that's how quickly that, that went. And at the end of that school year, the church was willing to continue that arrangement. However, the district felt that there was no playground space there. I mean, virtually nothing, other than blacktop parking areas. So, the principal at Tippler, who was then Mrs. Anne Schultz, said, "We have room here." So, Smith, sorry, Sunset moved intact to this facility. And they were here until there was no more Sunset. There was a Sunset on Sunset. So, that's how that, that worked. But it was basically a day. We had several hours to make this work. There was a handshake and an agreement of how much the district would pay to rent, and then the moving, the moving began. I would not like to go through that again. That was very traumatic because the teachers didn't know when they came to work that day. The students at Sunset didn't know when they came to school that day, that that would be their last day in the building. And that was, that was really hard. I, I gave you an explanation, but it's, it's really your turn, Mr. Evans.
But that was, that was quick.
It was.
Although I can still drive by the old Sunset, it's now a private enterprise, and I can't get in. It'd be nice to go in and see the old classroom. But why I bring this up is, a couple of years ago, Sunset had a reunion. And they held it at the Town of Oshkosh Town Hall. And I went there, and there was Sunset. The Sunset, it sounds kind of sentimental and sappy, but Sunset is that group of people that went there. We don't need to have that building. We can have our reunion at the town hall and still feel what Sunset was. If we decide to do something like this, Smith School is always going to be there somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else?
I do. I'm the newest member, so I don't know if I should wait to go last. I don't know. All right. So, Kelly and Allison and Stephanie said that they empathize with you as parents. And I will tell you that I empathize with you as a teacher. I have been through what you have been through. And I understand the feelings of anger and sadness and fear and confusion. I just want to acknowledge that, those emotions that have been here tonight. I love the activism. "Oh, you came back. I looked to see if you were still here." Yeah. I, I think this is powerful. But as Stephanie said, it's just the first conversation in our larger conversation for the city of what we are going to do with our facilities. I started coming to the school board meetings a year and a half ago. I've only actually been on the board a month. But I started coming a year and a half ago. I brought my young kids at the beginning. So, I also empathize with those of you who have been trying to wrangle young kids through this meeting. One of the first meetings I came to was Bray's Capital Improvements Project. And as I sat in the back of the board meeting room, and I saw this figure of $100 million and saw that it only addressed capital needs, I jumped into my activism because I could not allow the city to spend that much money and not improve educational needs. That is how I felt that night when I went home, and that really started my activism in wanting to be on this board. It's been mentioned that in the past that five, six of our buildings are over 100 years old. I also think it's worth noting that only three have been built in the last 45 years, which is 10 years older than I am. If we keep that rate of only building three schools in 45 years, we are expecting our 18-school buildings to be 270 years old. And I really doubt that when the board planned Oaklawn Elementary School, that they were thinking of the educational needs of students in the year 2020-80, which would be 270 years. We can't stay on that, that timeframe or that number of buildings, in my opinion. That's my personal belief. Sorry, I'm trying to speak from the heart, but I also want to look at my notes and stick with what I prepared because I knew this would be emotional and this would be difficult. I kind of already hit, when I asked my question, that combining Smith and Jefferson with 300 students will still be one of our smallest schools. The building is rare, and that it's one of only three schools that was built and designed for kids that live today. All the other schools were built and designed for kids that lived decades and centuries ago. I toured both Smith and Jefferson, and Jefferson is a beautiful building, and both schools are award-winning schools. Allison, you asked about the risk of combining them. When I had to leave the first school I was at, I did not have the luxury of guaranteeing my job. I wasn't told. Other, other job placements weren't on hold while I applied and found my own spot. I had to go and find it. So, I envy that a little bit. But I ended up at a school that had a mix of neighborhoods, and some were at higher risk than others. And in my experience, it's a beautiful thing to see that combination. And I don't think that there is any risk at all. In fact, I believe combining the two schools will lift all of the students in the school. I don't know if that's exactly what you were getting at, but I kind of thought of that. Sorry. How am I going to end, huh? I just, like I said, I want to acknowledge that this is emotional. It is difficult. It's also necessary. And, and I appreciate everyone who came out tonight and shared their feelings and their, their hearts about Smith. I actually checked out the book, Smith, 100 Year History, and I read it over the weekend. Smith has a beautiful history, and it always will. And there is no doubt how special that school and that history is to this community. That is not at all. What is a question here? That, that is very real in its felt here right now. So, thank you for your activism.
I've not been blessed with children in my life, my own children. When I've worked in the school districts, I've always felt that all the kids in the building were mine in some way. And that, that trauma of Sunset moving over a weekend, and the issues at Green Meadow were ones that were important to me. I was reflecting, have been reflecting over the course of the last week when we got the word that the roof was at, at a point where it could not be patched. You had to be all in and replace the whole thing. And one of my first concerns was student safety, but that led me to thinking about various visits to Smith School when I worked in the central office here, and that beautiful kindergarten room that Mrs. Yana taught so many students in over the years, and Mrs. Schenke's classroom, and going up to Mr. Wilson's classroom, the fifth-grade classroom, where you can still see the oval, the black ovals in the floor. They're about, I don't know, 12 inches long with the dots inside, where the desks used to be bolted to those. And the experiences that have been provided to Smith and their families over the years, I remember attending, I think they were called FAST programs, families and students, you know, families and schools together, where the, the students would receive information on behavior and the parents would receive parenting tips. And then they would come back together, and they ate in the cafeteria, and it was, it was really nice. And Arti and Ed's provided the custard and whatnot, and pretty special. And the, the principal who brought in exchange teachers from Japan to enhance the learning of the, of the children. So, one of the most touching memories I will carry with me forever from Smith, the Smith's community. So, one of the most touching memories I will carry with me forever from Smith, the Smith's community, happened in 1998, a long time ago. My mother had passed away. And the Smith community decided that they would dedicate their jump rope for heart that year to my mom. I still have that plaque that gave me, in fact, I have it here tonight. So, I will always carry a part of Smith in my head and in my heart. And I think that's why this is such a difficult decision for many of us. In both the 2016 and 2019 strategic plans, a high priority was identified as facilities. And while we haven't worked out the details yet, that was intended to be much of the work of the board going forward in this calendar year. The unfortunate situation with the Smith roof has really pushed that to a greater need. There's no question about the quality of the staff and the quality of education at Smith. That's always been such a family in that school. We're not questioning that. Mrs. Gunlock won the Principal of the Year Award last year. Well deserved. And other teachers have... Other teachers and staff members have won recognition as various Employees of the Year as well. So, that's not a question. We know that that quality will continue wherever the teachers and the students reside. But when we look at numbers, and one of the things that maybe has changed over time is that boards are more inclined to look at numbers. One of the factors is that Smith currently has about 160 students. That's roughly 1.6% of all the students in the district. And the school is operating at about 65% capacity. Over the last four years, there's been a 10% decline in the population. And the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, through their research, has stated that nearly all Wisconsin districts are likely to see a decrease in students in the next five years. As Mrs. Schnorr pointed out, this district has been under the revenue limit since 1993. Now, when you get your taxes, you might not think we're a low-spending district, but we are relative to many others in the state. There are over 100 of us who chose, over time, not to spend up to the legal limit that we could. And that law of 19, about 1993, was never intended to be around for 26 years, but it is. So, we spend well under the state average per child. And yet, we have so many award-winning schools and teachers in this district that it's really a tribute to the quality of our staff. But the safety issues of the mold, where we toured the building and I could put my hand on the wall and I could feel the coolness because of the water and the bubbling of the paint, was such that we can't have our students and our teachers in a situation like that and risk that health and safety may be further compromised. So, as Mr. Evans so well put it, Smith will remain forever, but it'll have to be in our heads and in our hearts. But there's so many positive memories that all of us can take from that school and that community. I also feel a kinship to that school in the sense that there were many settlers of early Oshkosh who described themselves as vulgar Germans or Germans from Russia. And that's my heritage as well. And so, I do feel a kinship for the people on the South Side whose ancestors can trace their relatives back to the old country in that way. But I'm so happy that, maybe happy isn't the right word. I'm so impressed that so many people spoke tonight in such a loving way of that school and that school community. And I'm also grateful to the chamber and the city manager and to GOEDC representatives for helping us, Oshkosh Corporation, for helping us see the bigger picture. Because when we have quality schools, it benefits that child, that family, and also the larger community. And I think that's something we need to keep in mind. Oshkosh for Education, a watchdog group that has been around for now three strategic plans, so about six years. These are people who have the best interests of our children at heart, and I think we have to keep that in mind. I've spoken enough. Who else would like to weigh in here? Mr. Paschal.
I grew up down the road from Smith, right around the McCurdy Street area, smack dab between Smith and Jacob Shapiro. So, I have lots of memories of utilizing the playground, utilizing the school, being a role model and a mentor for students at that school. So, I used to play baseball on the field at Smith School. And it was who could hit it out of the park the easiest, because it was a very small field. And many neighbors came out yelling at us when we did that. So, but I also remember, this memory came about when I toured the school in the last week, of being reminded that there used to be a gym that was below the street level. Because I have this memory of looking into the gym from the playground. And I have this memory of going into the school over the weekend, when schools used to be open on Friday nights and weekends for kids to go to and hang out and playing in the gym with many of my middle school friends who were there. And that's now the media center. So, and as an adult, as a young adult, as I was becoming a father, creating my own family, I worked for the Boys and Girls Club. And I spent many after-school hours helping entertain and helping shape those kids that are now would-be adults, entering our community, entering, going into their next lives of what their plan is to do and what we've done for them to shape them. Those are some really good memories that I have. And those are memories that I sure hope that the kids over the generations that have gone there have those as well. But as we sit here, one of our jobs is to look at the big picture, not just for our current students, but to look at how our educational capacity changes over generations. And how facilities fit into that, how curriculum fits into that, how, what we want most out of our students and out of our future leaders of our community, what we want out of them through all of this. Facilities are going to change greatly in the next 10 to 15 years. And what we need to educate our children is going to change even more in regards to technology and how we need to equip our schools, not only our current schools, but our future schools as well. And I think that's why having this conversation is important. I believe in really old historical buildings and that our community should maintain them and continue to build around those types of buildings. I myself own and lived in a building, in a part in a house that was built in 1895. So, a really old house that's, I think, one year older than Smith School. So, age is important to me, the level of history that is important to me. But we have to have this tough conversation about, does it make sense to continue to maintain old buildings like this? Does it, is it conducive with our educational capacity of what we expect our schools to provide? And that's where I begin to think that newer schools have that ability. Is it the best use of our dollars, taxpayer dollars, to continue to put money into 100-plus-year-old buildings? And I would love to say yes. I would love to be able to say yes. But the challenge is that are, there's better companies, there's better agencies, there's better organizations, nonprofit organizations, that can do that better than what we're supposed to do as a school district. And that's where I see our job is to create the future by educating our students. And as much as I love old historical buildings and how much they bring to our community, I have to think about not just what's going on right now, but thinking about what's the benefit for the future of our community. With that said, I'm open to a year if it creates more conversation. But I'm also comfortable making the tough decision that may need to be, maybe need to be taken in order to move our community and to move our district forward. I believe that time can help us find out more solutions. I believe that our district is doing, our administrators are doing a good job in telling us what's wrong and what we need to do. We have that task of putting that plan together. And I think my only concern is that this is just, because of the emergence of it, it's just a little bit outside of that plan being completely ready for the community and doing that. But with that said, we're still here to make tough decisions. And that's why you put us here. And unfortunately, if you don't like our, fortunately, if you don't like our decisions, people can remove us, and that's fine, because that's part of what democracy is in our community. But I don't think that Liz thought right away when she came onto this board that this would be what she would be talking about. You know, I think that this was a possibility of that. But I don't think, outside of everyone else that's gone through what they've gone through, that isn't why I got on the board. My reason of getting on the board was to maintain future integrity of the educational capacity of our district. And that means to enhance the lives of kids and their families through our mission, through creating those avenues. I just think this is one of those things where it's, where we still can continue to do what we need to do, but move on in a different direction. I know that's probably not what all of you want to hear, but it's what I feel. And I think it's important, I just think it's really important for us to be thinking about, not just a year down the line, but 10, 20 years down the line, and that's kind of where this is going. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Sorry, Mrs. Carr.
I'm sorry. You know, I was so nervous that I forgot the most important part of my decision. And that, to me, I ask myself with every decision I make, what is best for our students? And I honestly believe that sending our students to a school that is 105 years newer will provide them greater opportunities, greater learning environments, greater access to resources. We talked a little bit about the air quality in Smith and whether or not it's safe. And, you know, I would not support keeping it open for another year because I feel like the challenges in the building are not something that we can fix without a significant financial investment. Going forward, I do not necessarily know what, I don't have a firm opinion on what happens to Smith, but I do firmly believe that it should not be used for educational purposes. I would not be in favor of converting it into something else because I just do not think it's a great building for learning, for our learning needs today. The rooms are very small, we all know the challenges that it has. And then I also just wanted to say that one of the reasons that I, Dr. Cartwright, went to the top of my list when we were interviewing superintendents is that, you know, she was willing to have these conversations, and I appreciate her leadership in doing this. And this is one of the reasons that I wanted to hire Dr. Cartwright, because I knew she could help us work through this difficult facilities planning stages. So, I support you and I thank you for your leadership in this as well.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I would like to thank the team for your hard work under Dr. Cartwright's leadership. We all know this is an emotional issue. We also know that it's one that we want to make with the best interest of our students and our staff and also look at the big picture. So, this will come back in two weeks to the board for a vote, which would be the first Wednesday in June. And the reason for that is because, however that vote goes, we know that administration needs time to plan. And we want this transition, if that's the way we go, to be as smooth as possible. So, and we want, we wanted to make this decision while families were still around before summer vacation started. Because we've worked really hard to be open and transparent and share as much as possible. And if it weren't for that roof issue, that's got to be all or nothing. But that doesn't solve the foundational problems, and it doesn't solve the masonry block problems, and it doesn't solve the standing water necessarily. So, that's a lot of money, and we don't really have that in the budget. So, that's, it's all problematic. Anyway, I thank everyone who came tonight. Your input is valued and valuable. And at this point then, we'll move on to the consent resolution agenda. Thank you all very much. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. And a board member, if a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there any item that would like, anyone would like to pull? I would like to pull Resolution 8B on retirement. All right. So, seeing no other ones, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education... Got to get my right paper here. Hands don't work very well. Approve... Thank you. Approve the, one, minutes of April 22, 2019, board reorganization and special meeting. Two, minutes of April 24, 2019, regular board meeting. Number three, minutes of April 25, 2019, special board meeting. Number four, minutes of May 8, 2019, regular board meeting. Number five, minutes of May 8, 2018, executive session, regular board meeting. Number six, minutes of May 13, 2019, special board meeting. Number seven, bills payable. Number eight, A, personnel appointments, temporary appointments, resignations and salaries. Number nine, 2019 to 2020 curriculum adoptions. Number 10, 2019 to 2020 board meeting calendar. Number 11, certification of high school graduates. Number 12, extended contracts. Number 13, early learning partnership agreements. Number 14, Fox Valley Technical College Riverside contract for 2019-2020. Number 15, 2019 to 2020 school meal prices. Number 16, issuing high school uniforms, apparel and protective equipment. Please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Okay, Resolution 8B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. Once again, we have three long-serving staff members who are going to be getting a new age and stage of life called retirement, and we want to wish them well in their new endeavors. Karen Boone has been a media teacher assistant at Oaklawn Elementary School, and she has been with the district since 1998. Carol Gums, a kindergarten teacher at Oaklawn Elementary School, has been with the district since 1993. And Kelly Handler, instructional support teacher at Franklin Elementary School, has been with the district since 1982. We certainly wish them well and thank them for everything that they have done for the students and staff. Please call the roll.
Aye.
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 Are there any individually considered resolutions at this time?
Any requests for future agenda items at this time? Any announcements at this time? Then we shall entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for, one, considering the disciplinary data of specific persons under Wisconsin Statute 19.85, paren, one, paren, F. A, review expulsion recommendations from expulsion hearing officer for a middle school student who engaged in conduct while at school or while under the supervision of a school authority which endangered the property, health, or safety of others, and engaged in conduct constituting repeated refusal or neglect to obey the rules under Wisconsin Statute 120.13, paren, one, paren, C, paren, E. And two, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises authority Wisconsin Statute 19.85, paren, one, paren, C. A, consider a pending personnel matter. Please call the roll. Aye.
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 Thank you very much. And at this point then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can resume an executive session. I believe we're going across the driveway, or are we staying here? Okay. Ah, okay. So we are adjourned. All right. Meeting adjourned.[1768.54]